Special meeting of April 27, 2011, City Council Chamber, third floor, at 7:30 PM. I'd like to begin by taking attendance. Mr. Dean is not here. Mr. Finaldi is not here.
Mr. Yuris?
Here.
Mr. Manuel is not here. Mr. Ellis is here. Mr. Sanara is not here. Mr. Velasco is not here. Ms. Hossedah?
I'm here.
Okay, I'd like to... Ms. Hossedah asked me to sit in for Mr. Finaldi this evening.
I will.
Okay, Mr. Finaldi is not attendance because he has refused himself from hearing this application. The next scheduled meeting is for next Wednesday, May 4th, 2011. I'd like to start with our first public hearing at 7:30 PM. City Danbury Union Savings Bank, application for special exception for drive-through use as accessory to a bank in the CCBD Zone, 116 Main Street and 6 Bowman Street. Lot numbers I-14134 and I-14133, special exception number 712. Mr. Yuris, before I actually read the legal notice, I'd just like to ask everybody tonight to please speak clearly into the microphone. We are being taped for future broadcasts. I hope okay will access and also ask Ms. Hossedah and Mr. Yuris and staff do the same. Mr. Yuris?
Notice hereby given that the planning commission of the City of Danbury will hold public hearings commencing at 7:30 PM on April 27, 2011, in the City Council Chambers at City Hall, 155 Yerko Avenue. Consider the following matters. This would be the first one. City of Danbury using the Union Savings Bank, application for special exception for drive-through use as an accessory to a bank in the CCBD Zone, 116 Main Street and 6 Bowman Street. Lot numbers I-14134 and I-14133, special exception number 712.
Thank you, Mr. Yuris. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this application? Discuss state handling address for the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Gene Arriquas, Vice President of the Union Savings Bank. Our office is located at 225 Main Street in Danbury. I'm a resident taxpayer of the City of Danbury as well. First, let me thank the Commission for scheduling this special meeting to be able to hear these two applications that are before you this evening. As you may be aware, the City Council and the Mayor previously approved that Union Savings Bank is currently in contract with the City of Danbury to acquire parcels of land known as 116 Main Street, 6 Bowman Street, and 120 Main Street. Before you first this evening is the application for a special exception and site plan review of the Union Savings Bank proposal for 116 Main Street and 6 Bowman Street. But later this evening, you will also be entertaining the special application request and site plan review of the 120 Main Street property. I'd like to introduce the members of our team who are here to address you this evening. First is our architects and our design team of Mr. Ron DeCarlo, Abby Siago, and Ben Stewart. Jane Dodona of Dodona Landscaped Architects. Michael Mizuko, who's our civil engineer. Mr. Steve Sapole of Frederick B. Clark Associates is our traffic engineer. And Mr. Michael Finaldi, who will be joining us later from that same firm. Attorney Ted Becker, who is representing Union Savings Bank. And Attorney Christopher Lattimer, who is representing the Connecticut Institute for Communities. Mr. Jim Long, who is the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Connecticut Institute for Communities, is also here and will represent himself and his organization as you entertain this second application before you this evening. We are excited to present these plans to you tonight because we hope to bring to reality these plans for the benefit of our city and downtown's economic vitality. As noted, the Mayor and the City Council have approved the sale of these properties to Union Savings Bank, who will acquire all three properties. And the two, 116 Main Street and 6 Bowman Street, will then be merged into one for the development of the proposed Union Savings Bank building. And the second would be for the transfer of the property, once we acquire the property from the city, to the Connecticut Institute for Communities for the development of their federally qualified health center, the location of the Connecticut Institute for Communities corporate headquarters and offices, as well as the development of 48 units of senior housing and housing for veterans age 55 and over. At the end of the day, with obviously hoping you're favorable, we give approval and approval of all city agencies and all meeting all city requirements, we would be looking at an $18 million to $20 million reinvestment on these properties that roughly accumulate about two years. We believe this is a win-win-win proposition for all of us within the community of Danbury. The City of Danbury itself will be in order of the revenue benefit from properties that then will become part of the taxable grantless base, as well as the revenues associated with the construction activities and all of the fees associated with such activity. In addition, Union Savings Bank would be vacating the premises at 158 Main Street and the library building, which the second floor is connected to the main library building currently occupied as a technology center. And that entire building then would be made available for the Danbury Public Library's uses, as well as having all of the parking totally dedicated then 24/7 for municipal parking and obviously for dedicated parking for library uses throughout the course of its hours of operation. And the City also would see the development of the redevelopment of the functional reuse of what are now vacant and going to be lighted properties that are on our Main Street no longer needed by our police department and will be relocated to the beautiful facility at the north end of Main. In addition, the bank would benefit because we have a much better drive-up condition with your approval, as well as, we believe, a more accessible, handicap accessible, more environmentally sound environment for the benefit of those who access Union Savings Bank services. The Connecticut Institute for Community, which provides health, housing, and educational services for the people of our community, will see the benefit for all of those people who avail themselves of services and more as a result of the development of these facilities in our community that we would better serve as a whole. And certainly, St. Peter's Church, the parish, has been a partner in this whole process that you will hear in particular to the second hearing this evening, who will also benefit with improvements along their parking facility along South Street and Main Street. So there really is a win-win-win situation here for all parties concerned as we will see a major renovation and uplifting of this entire neighborhood area. There will be a significant private investment, reinvestment into these formerly or currently sitting on property properties. And there will be significant economic activity that will be a derivative as a result of this investment and new construction. When all is said and done, with maybe approximately 100 employees working in these facilities, not to mention between 48 and perhaps double that number, that will be occupying housing in the housing housing proposed on 120 Main Street. All of which presents opportunities for people to live downtown, to work downtown, to do business downtown, to access the services that are available downtown. And in particular, for the economic benefit of those businesses that already exist in the downtown as those nearly 100 employees, half of which will be of significant income, will have the opportunity to frequent our restaurants and other businesses here for the overall benefit and economic benefit of the downtowns of all. Two, when, from our perspective, the bank, speaking specifically to this application this evening, we recognize that in the CCBD Zone, the bank is in allowable use. We are before you because of the drive-up requirement of a special exception review by the planning commission this evening. We believe we have complied with all of the regulations of the City of Danbury as we presented them to the planning department this evening. And certainly, I want to thank the Director of Planning of Minnesota Company and certainly his staff and Jennifer Under for the work that they've done reviewing our plans over the last few weeks prepared for this evening as well. At this point, I'd like to call upon Mr. Ron DeCarlo to be able to make a presentation in detail to you of that which is applicable to the first application, which is the bank special exception for...
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene, and thank you to all members of the team who I'm working in association with, E3A and the entire team. I'd like to first walk you through, and I'll try to do this as quickly as possible, a little bit of project area, give you a sense of the surrounding area. Some of the things that we really looked at and we thought about as we generated the architecture, developed the planning, and thought about the project as a whole. This image, and I don't think my words will point you to work on it just because it's mine, but... Main Street to the right, this is the home park, St. Peter's Church. And basically, the roads and the projects I refer to are the ones we really are talking more about, that really pulled our cues from. Not only the church, but the rectory building and these adjoining buildings. And Main Street character as a whole, there's a lot of detail in what really makes the street successful. But if we sort of step back and think about it as a whole, the scale of the street, the street wall, the edges that are formed by groupings of tall buildings, all work in concert to be successful. And we really looked at that, studied that as we developed this particular project. In general terms, there are three subject areas we're covering tonight. The Union Savings Bank parcel on the corner of Bowman and Main, the Connecticut Institute property, also on the same corner just across from Bowman, then across the street to St. Peter's parking. So for more detail in this piece of our presentation, we'll talk about the USB study. Some existing architecture that was vacant and been seen a number of uses over the years, but now have kind of passed their, passed their time. We're looking at the removal of these three structures, existing original residential building on the corner, gone to other uses over time, and then also the fire station. These are views from Main Street, from Bowman, in the lower right-hand corner to view that fire station from Bowman. As we developed the USB branch and the adjoining properties of overall property, we, as a firm and as professionals, had the luxury of looking back on kind of where we all started with design intent. We had, together with the USB and senior staff, developed our signature branch design, which is being implemented either through renovation of existing branches or as new standalone construction, based on a number of what Union Savings Bank felt was drivers in terms of how they work and how they present themselves and how their architecture should read and feel. Some of those messages that became clear must have went through this process, this is a few years back. Our characteristics of USB, timeless, community-oriented, historic, neighborhooding, community-oriented. Basically, a lot of the characteristics they body as a culture, as a bank, but also a number of buildings represent that. An important one, I think, a lot of traditional and stable, is the Danbury character. Because it's a bank from Danbury, all their branches are looking like this character, this great building that's new, different, grounded. So as we developed their brand, all these phrases came to mind and kind of drove the image. For example, is their North Street headquarter branch. I think everybody's familiar with that. Also, their first standalone branch that is being constructed is standing in the road. It's close to completion, the exterior's complete, but working on the interior. That's an image of what that would look like when the project was completed. We'll get into a little more detail of exactly what the Main Street branch would look like. First, we're going to cover the site and all those pieces. Jane Dodona and Dodona Associates will be coming up and start to walk you through that.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jane Dodona. I'm the Principal of Dodona Associates Landscaped Architects. And I'm very pleased to be a part of this team. And we'd like to now get into the details of the site and how the site evolved. First, I'd like to just discuss the existing site as it is now. As described before, it's two parcels that are going to be merged into one parcel, which will now create a total of 49 happening. It's in the CCBD Zone. And it's currently consisting of a single-family house that was a doctor's office for a while, and then was bought by the city and became the community service division for police department. There are some garage outbuildings. And there's a making fire station that also became part of the police station as the eminence division. And then is the park. It's bounded by the East Main Street and by the North by Bowman Street. Our proposal is for a proposed use of Bank Financial Institute. The regulations don't really have any minimum lottery with yards, gross floor area coverage, but we have provided them on your cover sheet, so you will have them for your information. The building is 2,365 square feet of gross floor area and with the drive-through. The bank is permitted use, but the drive-through does require a special exception in this area. As described before, this branch is being moved from the space that it occupies within the Danbury Library to this location, providing opportunities for not only the library, but for Union Savings Bank. It's going to be an iconic building for Main Street. It's located across from Elmwood Park, which I just have to tell you, I designed. I said that so Dennis would get upset.
Is that why I moved to the back?
Dennis, myself, and Gene Arriquas met in 1997, believe it or not. And Elmwood Park is going to be celebrating its 13th year this year. When that park was conceptualized, we were called crazy. Because if you recall before, it was just two mud-filled islands with overgrown trees. And we, the team, created this iconic place that has been called "Danbury's Precious Treasure." And more recently, I just got a phone call last year from someone who actually told me that they had suffered from depression and that walking through Elmwood Park every day and seeing the beauty of that park transform at each season assisted in their health and saved their life. And I started bawling my eyes out because that's what a landscape architect wants to hear. Is that a place that special has transformed somebody's life. And I think there's many people in this city that have enjoyed the benefits of Elmwood Park. And so, when I was approached to do this project, and the reason being is they wanted to incorporate the elements of Elmwood Park in the site plan, I felt that this was really another example of how Elmwood Park has transformed that end of the City of Danbury, if not the entire City of Main Street. It was a risk in 1997, and it was a very good risk to take. It's going to incorporate and extend the beauty of that park to these two streets and create another example of importance of beauty in our lives, which is not spur目less. It's important to us. So in our site plan, in our street scale, and I do have a hard copy and also one to screen, so whichever you're more comfortable looking at, is that the Bowman Street, all the way from the corner of the property, all the way to the corner of Main Street, and from Main Street all the way to the corner of the property, is going to look like Elmwood Park. We're going to take the paving patterns. We're going to take the beautiful plantings, the roses, the cabinets. Everyone calls me every year, "What's those blue flowers?" "It's cabinets." And it still looks beautiful. I just drove by there now and they've just launched the park. So we're going to take that and put that in front of this beautiful building. And we're going to have lighting. We're going to have the Elmwood Park walls. We're going to have granite curbing. Going to have new walkways, street treats, and of course, the Union Savings Bank clock. So that's going to create an iconic corner when you're coming from North Main Street to South Main Street. Another beautiful place to rest your alman. Once we go into the site, we're not going to forget about that building. Of course, we're going to have our park. Our access is two-way from Bowman Street. And then it goes through the drive-through. You can either use the drive-through, which is going to have a draw. It's going to have a, I call it, this technical thing of two-beats thing, whatever that is. And then it's going to have an ATM, and then a pass-through lane. When you exit the drive-through, you will, obviously, but there will be signage in case people don't think that's obvious, have to make a right-hand turn onto Main Street. There will be the beautiful lights, so we are going to continue that design vocabulary into the back. There is no back of this bank. Every side is beautiful. Every side is articulate. The drive-through will have enough stacking area for the cars, which is not the case, I understand, at the library branch right now. So we are improving that situation. Now, parking requirements. We have a usable gross floor area of 2,010 square feet. And using the divider of 150 square feet per space, that translates into 14 spaces required in one handicap space. We already provide 16 9x20 spaces. And then because we're allowed to do 30% of the requirement compact, we're also including four compact spaces for a total of 20 spaces plus one van handicap space. The reason for that additional space will be come clear in the next application. There's no loading requirement for the bank. And there is no dumpster because the service company that takes care of the banks, all the banks, not just this one, removes and recycles all products and waste that the bank produces. And they're very big in recycling as far as paper and electronics, light bulbs, et cetera. Also, they also remove all the snow. So they don't even just pile the snow, they actually remove it for the convenience of their customers. Now, on top of all of this, there's also the idea of the pedestrian, pedestrian access. The Bowman Street access is the handicap access. And we are creating a connection from our parking area, using again the beautiful Elmwood Park papers, and connecting to the handicap access on Bowman Street, which will also have the pedestrian ATM. And then, the last part of the pedestrian aspect is that the City asked us, through this application process, if we'd be so kind, is to improve the crosswalks in seven locations in this area. And so the bank has agreed to improve those crosswalks, upgrading those crosswalks to the same crosswalk detail that is on Main Street, which is a street-print crosswalk. So they'll be improving the crosswalks in front of the bank, in front of the Connecticut Institute site, in front of St. Peter's, down south toward St. Peter's School, and across from St. Peter's School on the other side of Elmwood Park. So seven crosswalks will also be started to improve on Main Street. We have gotten reports from the City, staff reports. We got approval of the traffic from a traffic engineer in the Traffic Authority. I do want to say that there is no traffic study required for this project, but we did ask Mr. Galante's firm, F.P. Clark, to review the traffic issues that are on any site, and the bank site specifically. And he indicated to us in his letter which was submitted with our application that there are insignificant impacts from the traffic generated by the bank. The staff reports also on mobility, impoundcy, and engineering have all been positive. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Michael Mizuko, so he can now discuss with you the technical parts of utilities and the store management.
Mr. Yuris, any questions? Thank you.
Yes. Building, planning, zoning, engineering, the traffic, fire marshal, and the Traffic Authority, which I can use the police chief.
Who else, Mr. Senator, I say, Mr. Senator?
It's okay. Mr. Chairman, at this point, we have all departments' comments except the Construction Services Department. I spoke with them this afternoon. They're currently finishing their review. We should have it at some point tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Good evening. For the record, Michael Mizuko, professional engineer. My office is in Danbury. And I'll just try to go to the... I don't have my plans on the PowerPoint, so I'm going to refer to the boards. So I'm just going to try to head over in that direction.
Take a mic. Thank you. Can we maybe put that a little closer to us so we can see a little better? I know we're not going to show everyone what people need that gallery seat to. Thank you. Thank you.
This map is a map of the 500-foot driveway area map. It shows the site with the surrounding area 500 feet. And it shows the topography, some buildings, roads, and then driveways. The map next to that is the flood insurance screen map. And it's a little hard to see, but in the center of that is the site. And it does show that there is no flood plain in the area. Also, I'd like to note that there are no weapons and no regulated activities associated with this proposed development. There's no stream there.
Was the wrong thing?
Yes. Hopefully, that's...
No, this is the Union Savings Bank.
This is a map of the existing conditions. And it just shows the existing building at the corner. There is a parking area associated with that building, and then the detached garage. And then on the Bowman Street site, which is the old firehouse, it shows the existing building. There's a parking area, and then there's a garage in the back. You can see that most of that site is either building or pavement. And the existing topography is that it drops in a southerly direction and then a northerly direction. So there's about anywhere from 6 to 8 feet grade change in the site. There's, the existing utilities are water, sewer... There's, the existing utilities are water, sewer, gas, and they're on Bowman Street as well as Main Street. The existing drainage patterns are such that the Bowman Street site, there's a sort of break in the topography, so most of the water that drains from that site heads in the southerly direction towards St. Peter's property. The Main Street site heads to a catch basin, existing catch basin in the corner of the parking lot. There's an existing 15-inch pipe that ties into the catch basin that's in Main Street. And so what we did was, we analyzed the drainage in the entire site of the different areas, and we tried to just maintain the flows, so we didn't exceed the existing conditions. This is the improved site proposal, and you can see the parking lots, the drainage systems that we have, and what we did was, because we, our drainage system picks up the majority of the water from the Bowman Street site, we have substantial reduction of flow to the St. Peter's property. The flow then heads to a detention system, which picks up the building, the smaller parking area, just to the west of the bank, and the drive-up area. That gets routed through the detention system, and then heads back into that same pipe, which is Main Street. And I would just like to note that, you know, we're sensitive to the drainage issues that are in this area, and we definitely wanted to maintain the flow out of that catch basin, the existing catch basin into Main Street. So when we analyzed the flows, when we added the...
I have one more question, please.
When we looked at the total flow from the site for a 25-year storm event, the flow's existing conditions were 2.5 CFS. When we finished analyzing the site, routing it through the detention system, the design, the outlet, the outfall from the site, developed conditions was 1.3 CFS. So we had almost, with a 48% reduction in the flow out of the site, because of the limitation that we wanted to keep on that pipe going out, the existing pipe going out to Main So again, we were very sensitive to the drainage issues out there and maintaining the flows to the existing conditions.
Mr. Yarison, question, just going to finish with the drainage of the site. I think you can finish out with the drainage of the project.
On the drainage?
Yeah.
We do have a number of, because there were several buildings out there, we do have a number of existing lateral connections that we'll need to terminate, so we're showing all those being terminated, and then newer connections. And that's really about it in terms of the utilities and the drainage.
Mr. Yarison?
This is the drainage that comes off from the west end of the property that would normally have gone on the St. Peter's property. We're now capturing most of that and putting it through the detention system.
That's correct.
So we're going to be diverting more water over to towards Main Street service system, which we know floods from time to time. What's the differential in the total water flow to come off of that property towards Main Street as opposed to existing conditions?
Well, the existing flow that we had to, to Main Street was about 1.6 CFS. So we have a small amount bypassing, a tenth of a CFS. So we had, say, 1.6 CFS, but now they're going to have 1.3. So we still have a .3 CFS decrease going to Main Street.
What's the comparison at the detention basin?
In terms of?
Just, you know, visualizing flooding there, and just making, how much of the rain will come in that hole before it becomes overwhelmed and just...
Well, it's a 25-year storm design, which is the requirement to the city, so we, now don't forget that the water that comes off of the westward side does eventually get back out to Main Street. So it's just that it's getting out into a different area, but ultimately it does go back out to Main Street. So, you know, when you look at that micro area, it's .3 CFS less, but when you look at the whole thing, ultimately it's 1.2 CFS reduction.
Okay. And the impermeable surface change?
Well, it did. I mean, we did have an increase in impermeable surface, but it wasn't, it wasn't substantial, because most of the Bowman Street site was, that was almost 9% covered already. And then you have the large parking area, and then the building. So, you know, most of that air was all impermeable anyway, existing. Now, we did receive comments, as Jane had mentioned, from engineering, and we did respond to those, and I guess they did respond back with some, there was two pieces of information we need to supply, but it's worth talking.
Senator?
Mr. Chairman, we received this afternoon from the engineering department a letter that states that the plans are generally acceptable, they're still waiting for the needed fire flow analysis, once that becomes available, those details will need to be submitted.
And then just the last part of it, just a detail sheet showing the construction details. So if there's any other questions, I'll turn it back over to the project architect for his further review of the building itself.
So moving on to the floor plan, we want to give you a sense of exactly what is going on our inside building. This is oriented, just like the site plan is, north is up on plan. Two entrances, and then at this point, Main Street, Bowman. And we have a way off of that Main Street entrance, a long balcony, a number of offices, branch, and assistant branch managers' office. The tower area is on the lower part of the plan, in this area here, and then the main public area in the center. All the branches, as we develop them, we strive to keep them as transparent as possible. So you'll see elevations, in some of the renderings, very large windows, there's transit above the windows, we have ceilings very high. We really do our best to have the banking exterior, the interior and exterior wrapped, and there's a little more connection with the surrounding neighborhood. We have four elevations here, on the upper part of the slide, facing Main Street, Bowman Street elevation here. In general, the building is, has pitched roof, appears as a pitched roof. We've gone through great pains in the development, other signature branch designs should not see any flat roof areas to hide all of the mechanical, external condensers, none of those things, particularly if you see a pad-like development that you might have for a bank. Those are all up in the well, instead of the building, you really can't see them from the exterior at all.
What's the maximum elevation on the roof? What's the highest one?
The highest point, I probably read it upstairs, excuse me a second. It's 26 feet, I believe, to the very tallest point of the roof. The E is at 12 feet.
Thank you.
The top elevation faces the parking area, and then the elevation on the tower side. As Jane mentioned, there really is no backside to the building. We've designed it all to read and feel like you're not looking back into it. I understand that essentially, with where the building is located, you really see all four sides, they're all being interacted with. A few of the exterior, and I really say this when we talk more about the architecture, each branch's design has this enlarged base of buildings. A brick comes down, typically a brick building, probably those are built as a veneer, they're not built there, and there's much less opportunity without spending much of the cost to have that leaf of the brick. Union has made it a priority to really make this building look traditional, like it fits in, so we have, again, the base of the building coming out, we have this accent band of brick through the transit area here. Where you normally have one column of pavement, there's a cluster of three, so it's much, much more detail.
Excuse me, is it just the drive-through ATM, is ATM inside or something?
No, that's a great question, thank you. That Bowman Street entrance is a walk-in ATM, and that is an accessible ATM, and actually there's a great segue. We have a night view, because we realize how important it is to be at night, how often we use it, but not only has access to the ATM, nowadays ATMs are really an important part of the community, so it's important that you saw that it was well lit, again, the transparency is there, it shows pretty well in the night view. You really don't have an issue feeling safe going to a space that can be seen into it as well. The other thing that's important is, again, the building's presence, the building's location, and how it reads at night really affects all the surrounding areas, so you're feeling more safe with what appears to be activity.
And, Miss Yarison, is there also a drive-up ATM, or not just the one inside?
We have planned for a future drive-up, but there isn't one, because there's one being sold this previous time.
That's not a problem. Thank you.
A little bit of materials, briefly, like a hand to you, if you'd like to see them. The main body of the building, the brick, there is the accent band you see along the transit, close to the E, slightly different, it's the exact same brick used on the Merce Street project. The door is cherry-finished wood, so the door kind of pops and is kind of welcoming.
Ron, is it just the one street entrance off of Bowman, or is there other street entrances on the back, or the pocket entrance per se? So is our entrance, or is it a little entrance, or is it just that one entrance?
There's two main entrances. What you're seeing, and I'll put to the right entrance there, the entrance on the right, that is the Bowman Street entrance, which reaches the main entrance. This elevation will also read as in front of the building on Main Street. The building, it really works as a corner, corner building, with both approaches being relatively equal.
Thank you.
There is a little bit of detail, a little bit of pre-caps at the top of those chimney caps, and the caps, it appears, when the columns come down. Finally, the tone of the white is an antique white, a clonewhy, it's not bright white, it's a little bit off, a little more than just bright white. With that, to close this piece of our presentation, Jean will come back up, Jean will come back up and make some closer remarks.
Mr. Yarison, question? Before we get away from the way out.
On the parking in the non-back of the building, is that a ramp erected by the building, a handicap ramp, in the parking lot, and some of the earlier options we saw? No, right there, yeah? Is that a handicap ramp on it?
Yes, yes, it is. Handicap accessible walkway, ramp.
Is that where the handicap parking will be?
Yes, the handicap one against, Mr. Jane, don't divide away. Handicap parking is adjacent right to that walkway, which is handicap accessible.
Thank you. That's a one-way, I mean, that's not a handicap slot.
It's not a ramp. No, the ramp would indicate that it has a slope, it's pretty much, I think it's a 2% slope.
There was another question, the way out of the parking lot. Is that two-way right here? And it's all on the way towards Main Street? You can't turn in, I mean, I see the driveway, which is already a surge, turning, but it's going to be signed with no issues.
There'll be several times that say, do not enter one way, et cetera.
It's a one-way driveway?
It's one-way, it's two-way on Bowman Street, and one-way, two lanes, one-way to go to the two window and the, like I said, the two-beam, I'm sure there's a more technical term for that, and then the, the, I don't know, landing doors. And then there's a bypass lane, in case you've gone down there and decided, gee, I really didn't want to go through the drive-through, so you can have that.
Mr. Yarison, any further? Thank you.
Ron and Jane, Mr. Chairman, Jean Arrows, we need to say again, just to further clarify, there's an entrance and exit from the Bowman Street side, because we wanted to provide the opportunity for those who want to walk in, the brush, the business, to exit out of Bowman Street side as well, and certainly we need all the regulations and you see the impact of this, but it also presents the opportunity for people to be able to use the bypass lane, to be able to take that right into, the shape of that drive, which you may notice, direction to that right into, on the outside of Main Street.
So it's a, it's a raised median, or it's something that's going to really curve out to really prevent people from making a lot?
Yes. And there are basically two lanes that have been identified as a drive-up. One is a drive-up for the deal doors, as referred to, the tower, the window, the door. At the same time, someone could be cute, as they are now at the 158 Main Street location, although there won't be parking to the side and people trying to bypass that, nor will you be turning out into an intersection with a traffic light, so it would be a much better condition, turning out of this location than the currently at, and the currently existing 158 Main Street location. Lastly, I just wanted to say that in conclusion, before we entertain your questions and address any particular concerns that you and the public may have, that we at Union Savings Bank are devoted to our mission to provide a safe and secure environment for our customers, consumers, employees, and the communities that we serve and which we do business. We maintain a focus and a credibility and ensuring accessibility for persons with disabilities, with accessible restrooms, tunnel windows, check desks, and other amenities while they are in our bank and doing business outside of our bank. We are also devoted to the environment with which we coexist. Our intent is to do our part in beautifying our environment and our surroundings. We are engaged in extensive recycling programs and our energy efficiencies, so we're using recyclable materials in the development of our buildings, of both the exterior and interior where possible. And I believe this particular project that's presented to you this evening meets all of those objectives that we at the bank have. Lastly, I just wanted to add the timetable, that if, again, we do meet with your favorable approval this evening, we, our intention would be to close with the city and accord with the contract in which we have engaged, honor our obligation first, and at which point we would move expeditiously to the knowledge, to existing buildings, and our buildings on these properties, and hopefully by the middle of July, we start to see this bank building rising from the ground, with the expected completion toward the end of the year. With that, thank you.
Ms. Hospital?
Regarding the construction with demolition, this is the area. We'll be...
We'll be putting up fencing and similar around the area, but how does that going to impact pedestrian traffic?
We will be working onsite to remove the buildings and the garage. They are set back off of the sidewalks now. And the work, as I understand it from our demolition contractor, licensed demolition contractors, that he would work from within the site in the parking area, taking the small garage that's adjacent to the building on the corner of Main and Bowman, then building on the corner, and then work to remove the former evidence building and the lease apartment as the next step.
Okay, so you're saying that the fencing the door and still eat the sidewalk?
That's right.
And then, I guess, when you get to sidewalk renovation or replacement, you'd be deterring pedestrians in?
Well, we'll be, remember, doing the street scape on Main Street, you're going to have to incur all of those challenges. So we'll be certainly along that Bowman Street area, we're trying to make accommodations for any disruption as a result of the replacement of sidewalks and that, and streets, and elements along the Main Street portion in front of the bank as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I have a request. Transition, you're going to abandon your existing facility down on Main Street, I mean, the drive-up facility, not everything on Main Street. Is that going to be closed immediately after the opening of this facility?
Yes, the agreement with the city is that you would vacate, terminate that lease, then turn that property over entirely to the city as the city owned, had the bank owned. Which obviously we bought it. Expanded the library, subsequent for the Library of Fire. And the arrangement was that Union Savings Bank would remain in that first floor for a period of time to its lease arrangements. And as the bank was looking to extend that lease, there was some friendly opposition from library patrons or library leadership or the friends of the library that they would really need and like to have that space available to them. And I think everyone, you know, feels that that entire building should be dedicated for the public libraries usage or accessories.
I understand that the traffic service is not really required, but since you did want, we're going to do that. Since it's before, it may be different than what we desire, but substantially, the traffic's not going to change between the two facilities. I mean, I know you'd like for it to be a collateral traffic, but it's really just moving it from a couple blocks down the street.
Right. We're making a significant difference in the acquisition of this property, as well as the development of the building, which we believe is very exciting, pleasing, fixing the Main Street, adds to that economic vitality to drive, and hopefully will spur other economic development than not only this area, but other locations along and adjacent to it. But that's correct. I must admit, though, to you that the, that walk-up ATM is one of the busiest in all of our 28 branch networks right now, so.
I assume the other project you're expecting it to be even more, too?
Well, I think, you know, we're providing that totally handicap accessible ATM walk-up along the Bowman Street side. I think it'll be better lighting, it'll be a better condition overall, it'll be better parking to be able to access it, for persons with disabilities. As that's primarily all agreed into that particular area. And so we, again, we do have our main bank function still at the main office of the 5th to 26th Main Street. Our corporate office is, of course, entirely located within the gallery of the 25th Main Street. So this really serves as a branch, retail branch location that meets the needs of people who are looking for the accessible services that the bank provides to them.
Considering, and I know it's a subsidiary project that we've got going on, we'll be going across the street. The walk-up ATM, which I would assume will be very accessible to the housing project that's proposed across the street, is that, there's going to be security cameras in that area?
Absolutely. There will be cameras inside the building, outside the building, and within the parking lot.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of answer a question on there. The lighting during non-business hours, since it's an ATM, they are certainly going to be prepped up 24/7?
Yes, as the rendering, the nighttime rendering depicted, we are lighting that vestibule tremendously, as you can see. It really does invite, this is a secure environment, and it's inviting more, inviting frankly, than the existing situation at 158 Main Street. So this is in much, much better condition, people will be very visible from traffic heading southbound on Main Street or any traffic along Bowman Street as well. And we have the necessary security to deter any potential problems to the left.
I just have one other question on traffic there. And according to the traffic report I have in front of me, it's expected, this project's expected to anticipate generating out of about 400 vehicle trips. How does that compare to what we see at North Street?
North Street is one. Not exactly sure of the exact concept to get there first, Chairman, but the North Street is a very, very active environment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? State your name and address of the record, please.
Tom Lynn Waller, please, we have a matter of Danbury, Connecticut, and I know the handicap folks may be using this bank. And I appreciate all the help that we can get. I appreciate and approve of this plan as well as the opposite side of the street. I'm not sure how much longer I'm going to be able to stay in the public hearing. But I had a couple of questions on this, and some of them dealt with the lighting. Will that be shining into any individual housing units that are going to be built with the new development or that are already there from St. Peter's? I just, I've had a problem with lighting shining into my property from some other place that bothers me. So if they're going to be putting housing close by, I just want to be sure the lights aren't going to be affecting people who are trying to sleep all night. And I also am worried about people being jumped from bushes as they go to the ATM, so that's probably, you don't want to get really tall bushes. The other thing I questioned, and this came to my mind, I should have mentioned it yesterday when we met with Mayor President and Congressman the morning, the crosswalks. Down in New Jersey, I have known and have seen a lot of them raise up just a little bit, and they put lighting on the edge of the crosswalk. So when a pedestrian is in the crosswalk, the lights light, so it warns drivers that there's someone there. And I know we don't do it yet, I wrote it up to Mayor Bowman a couple of years ago, and I guess there's no money to do it. But these aren't fairly as long crosswalks, but it might be something to think about if you're going to improve the crosswalks anyway, that maybe it would be something that we could put in and help with the dead screens, especially if you have a lot of seniors on chains or wheelchair. It takes them a little longer to get across streets than average. So, but I highly approve of what they are presenting. The buildings are beautiful, I switched banking and went to North Street, it was so lovely. And because of the handicap accessible portion of it, so I do approve of that, and I especially approve of the housing. We've been trying to get that for years, so it's nice to see that they're on forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Mr. Chairman, any further comments you have on this?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I request that you keep the hearing open, so we're able to, so we're able to receive final sets of maps from the applicant. At this point, all comments from the various departments, other than Construction Services, have been resolved. We're just waiting for that final set to come in. Staff has no additional comments or concerns.
Mr. Chairman? I agree, probably need to keep it open until next week's meeting. But considering how the staff, of course, are weak, we might move this to all business for consideration to discuss. Maybe we get the directions to staff on our intent, and, you know, if so, leaves the commission, we might get this approved next meeting.
Is that a motion that you made in this office?
Yes.
We did, we did.
But I don't want to make that, I mean, we did, we took the motion.
Does the applicant want to respond to the question from this floor this time, or anybody else to respond to Sarah was?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's Union Savings Bank. With regards to the lighting, obviously, the various 31 properties of Union Savings Bank, and how it operates or operates and does business, we're sensitive to our neighbors and certainly the lighting, and we will ensure that the lighting is not atrocious and it's not going to be affecting any of our neighbors, be it St. Peter's, or the new housing or merchant development. Hopefully, it will be developed on the other side of Bowman Street or senior housing. With regard to any shrubbery, we don't have any shrubbery, we have the standard provided. Shrubbery really needs to, when it's adjacent to the building, needs to be no taller than the first grille of all within the windows, so that in fact, people can't be jumping out of bushes, if you will. And I haven't heard of the type of crosswalks. We're, Union Savings Bank has offered to apply the new crosswalks to these second locations that Mr. Dunne had identified. And so if there were any other enhancements or types of crosswalks that the city would desire or are unable to do in that, as long as we can afford it, not necessarily.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, at this point in time, I have an entertaining motion to continue the public hearing until Wednesday evening before. I'm sorry, motion made by the chairman, second motion to the U.S., any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, please move the agreement to the holders for discussion, for staff guidance.
Okay, so we also have a motion on the table to move this item to all business for consideration, public participation, any further discussion? If not, we're all in favor of continuing the public hearing and moving it to all business for consideration for this evening, to signify this, and aye?
Aye.
Okay, this application is moved to continuation and for all business for consideration here this evening. The next public hearing that will be here this evening, that was scheduled for 7:40 p.m., City of Danbury, Union Savings Bank, Connecticut Institute for Communities Incorporated Application for Special Exception, 120 Main Street. Two permitted, one, garden apartments, two, a use of combination of uses, which will generate over 500 vehicle trips per day. And number three, shared parking in the C C D zone, Main Street and Bowman Street. Lot numbers I-14135 and I-14437. Shared parking lot is I-14379, I-14380, I-14381, I-14382, I-14383, I-14384, I-14385. I-14385 is access over I-14378, special exception number 713, Mr. Chairman, appealing to the public members.
We just did.
We need to read again.
Notice is hereby given, the planning commission of City of Danbury will hold public hearings commenced at 7:30 p.m. on April 27, 2011, in City Council chambers of City Hall 155, third building, as considered the hall in that. City of Danbury, Union Savings Bank, Connecticut Institute for, Connecticut Institute Communities Inc., application for special exception, 120 Main Street, to line garden apartments, two, a use of combination of uses, which will generate...
Yes, and do you see us, you know, you can wave your hand and...
Okay. Combination of uses between January, over 500 visual trips per day. And three, shared parking in the C C D zone, Main Street and Bowman Street. Without objection, I will lay the reading of the lot numbers, special exception 713. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.